Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, August the ninth, twenty twenty-two, five thirty P. M. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public hearing number one.
An ordinance to declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on govdeal.com. John Deere backhoe model four-one-zero G, four backhoe tires, nineteen ninety-seven Chevrolet chassis panel truck, unit six-one-one, two steel ER three-eighty blowers, steel BR three forty blowers, Jana Swallow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is all equipment that is in poor working condition. The department is no longer needed. So we're just asking permission to surplus and sell on govdeals.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council? Thank you, Jana.
Thanks, Jana.
Thank you.
Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, August the ninth, twenty twenty-two, five thirty-one P. M. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
At this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Ron Matthews to come up and lead us in our prayer.
Let us pray. Precious Father God, we thank you for your love, your kindness, and your tender mercy. God, we ask you to look down upon each and every one who's represented here today. Look upon this meeting, the leaders of this city, the mayor, council, administration, all of those in attendance. God bless us, lead us and guide us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jay Marie Knighton to come up, going to lead us in our pleasurable allegiance. I ask that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
This allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of which stands one nation under God, in the best book will let it tear just for all.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from our July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two meeting. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, I have some presentation that I would like to make, an acknowledgement of the Zoe Ministry and Ms. Deborah McQueen for the investment that she has made into the children. She's been working with some youth over out of our district in District One with a summer working program with their reading, and I just want to acknowledge her for the job that she's been doing, the investment that you're making in back into the community because you're standing on exactly what the word says, to train up a child in the way they should go. And we are greatly appreciative of that. And I would like to acknowledge the young men that are here on this front row on this side who have been going through that program with her.
Emmanuel Berry. Kayla Edwards. Jay Foster Brown. Jay Marie Knighton. Joseph Jackson. Jamarcus Knighton. Darius Reeves. And Javon Thomas.
To show you some appreciation, see you guys on the work that you putting in over the last couple of years on the summer. Yes, a free meal on the council, we go to uh, Raisin Canyon.
Y'all keep it up, guys. Good job.
Ms. Deborah. Me myself personally, I'd like to say thank you. And me being a city councilman, this is what I look forward to, you know, that the young men in the community, that you can take time out of your schedule and find something for them to do positive. Thank you so much.
All right. All right, next presentation from the grant committee representative.
Good evening. My name's Lauren Fanley, and I was asked by Councilman Gonzalez to represent our district. Our committee members met on August second and fifth. The first, we were originally told we'd have one meeting and realized we had lots of work to learn. Our committee members were Ms. Shawna Seals, myself, Mike Williams, Ryan Oliphant, Ms. Jennifer Bullock, and then Lacey Landrum was there to help us facilitate the meeting. The committee met and reviewed the applications. Some applications were submitted with specific details and thorough supporting of documentation. Others were submitted with less detail. The committee invited those organizations to attend a second meeting held on August the fifth to ask for follow-up questions to better understand the proposal's scope and how the funds would be used to benefit Hammond residents. The committee reviewed how past awards had been made and discussed how to ensure fairness, transparency, and compliance when making awards and dis- and dispersing funds. The criteria we used were, how does this directly affect Hammond residents, the number of residents served by the organization and their services, and does the organization support current city services? Here's a list of the organizations that applied and how much each organization requested, from highest to lowest amounts. The African American Heritage Museum asked ninety thousand dollars. Louisiana Children's Discovery Center asked eighty. The Urban Marketplace Experience asked seventy-five thousand. Child Advocacy Services asked for thirty. Crime Stoppers of Tangipahoa asked for eleven thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. Tangi Humane Society asked for five thousand dollars. The committee struggled with knowing the city council's expectations of our committee, our charge, and our purview. So we actually have a few questions for you all. Is the council interested in setting a limit as to how much an individual organization can request? Can the committee set additional guidelines such as, should there be different guidelines for new organizations versus older ones based on their demonstrated outcomes? Could the committee establish short-term awards or only specific projects or programs instead of a general support for a fiscal year? We wrestled with all of these questions, and we, because we met on Tuesday with this meeting happening today, we weren't quite sure, so we met again that Friday. And then over the weekend, Lacey also gave us some information from the city attorney as well. But at that point, we had already made a decision. So because we were concerned about the council's expectation and the scope of our committee, and we had felt compelled to have an answer for the council tonight, we did not want to prolong the wait for awards for these organizations. We recommended that each organization is given their ask. We know that you have the power to accept our recommendation or change it. So does the council want to add more funding to be allocated so that those requests for each organization can be funded in full? Currently, the requests are greater than the budget of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars by sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. This would require introducing a budget amendment as an ordinance to transfer money from the general fund's fund balance. The earliest awards could be made is August twenty-third after the public hearing and final adoption of the amendment. That was also a question too. If we over, if we decide to overfund, how does that affect the timeline of everything? How does that affect you guys and the awards presentations? The committee would like to meet again to continue our work with further guidance from you about the scope of this committee, the work asked, and its processes for future years. We need more objective criteria that can, that can be implemented, especially if the city would like to open the application process to more organizations. We will provide a final report and recommendations for this year after presenting to the council tonight. Where would you like us to go from here?
So how far over were y'all? How far over?
Sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six thousand dollars.
All right. I think, didn't we raise it from one-seventy-five was the last one to two-twenty-five?
Correct.
So that would, that gave an extra fifty grand pretty much to, you know, to share it around and spread it. And I think the Children's Discovery Center was actually going down ten thousand.
Correct.
From that. So that actually gave another ten thousand to, to spread around to nonprofits. And did anyone else get a reduction in their, in what they were getting the previous year? Or was it just the Children's Discovery Center?
Was we, so one of the things that we did, Children's Discovery Center has somewhat of a plan with you all that they receive a certain amount every year, and then they, their request or their ask goes down every year by ten thousand dollars. So we really didn't wrestle with that a whole lot because we felt like there was some criteria there. Tangi Humane Society is a new organization applying for funding, and they only requested five thousand dollars. TAM, however, requested ninety thousand dollars. So it was like, how, how do we?
Who was that? Who was that that requested?
African American Heritage Museum.
Okay, okay.
And so part of the reason why we had the second meeting was to ask them, well, their, their application, there were a few applications that weren't as clear, but they also had the greatest asks. And we wanted to understand, you know, well, what is your budget and why are you asking these funds? Covid's been a big deal. Ida has been a big deal. So with such a limited scope of how we were to select or, or limit funds to each organization, we decided that we would ask the council, if we fully fund each one, would you want to make a budget amendment and just prolong their rewards over the next few weeks? Or do you want us to go back in and continue working and maybe give us some guidelines about that? Part of our issue was, we really didn't have a history with doing any of this. And so part, we had asked Lacey, what were the previous year's awards for each organization? You know, Crime Stoppers was pretty easy. They use a formula based on the percentage or the total population that they're serving. They were pretty simple, but some of the others didn't really have that. And then you had UMX who was a fairly new organization, and they are doing a lot, but they don't have as many years to build upon. So they had a large ask. Last year, you guys offered them zero. And so we didn't want to tell them no either. So it was, it was very much a struggle, especially based on having about a week, not even a week to deliberate, and really one meeting to decide on these.
Yeah.
Each organization.
I think we're moving in the right direction and getting the committee set up. But I think the big problem is, is a policy and procedure and guidelines put in place.
Right.
So it's fair, or y'all have something to work with or maybe create something because, you know, I mean, where's everybody working towards, you know? I mean, is, is some going downward or are they trying to work to get to a lower number and then some continue to ask for more? What justifies ask for more or less or the same amount? Or who's to say this one gets more or not? So, I mean, really a policy of some sort and percentages of whatever, you know, I think would help out y'all making decisions.
It would, definitely. And that was part of our, our request. We kind of turned it back around on you all. Sorry. Because this has been an issue evidently for years. You're not really, and that's why you asked to form a committee. So our committee just said, we weren't exactly sure what we could do legally. That was another question. And Lacey was able to get some guidance from Mr. Cudrain, but that was on Sunday. So we continued to email each other and talk, but the way that we left things in our public forum, because we did ask the African American Heritage Museum and UMX to come and just to, so that we could ask them questions. We just, it was really hard. If all of them are in compliance and they're all asking these things, we really had no way of saying, well, you should get this amount and you should have that amount, or we should decrease your money. So it just felt unfair. So that's why we were like, we can, we want, we would like to continue to meet, to create some guidelines and continue to have this conversation if you'd like us to. But we weren't sure if you wanted a decision tonight or if you got, you guys want to deliberate and decide, or if you want us to meet again and give us a little more criteria and then go from there.
I have a question myself.
Sure.
Uh, thank you too for volunteering being on the committee. Altogether, it was six, right, that requested money. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, it was six that requested money. Okay, Friday, y'all had a meeting Friday. And from when I was there, and, and let me know if I'm wrong, from when I was there, from what Mike had said, that everybody that requests something, he said to give it to them, right?
That's what I'm saying. If, if we do that, then you're over budget or we're over budget by sixty-six thousand dollars. And so that triggers you all to have to decide on whether or not you want to fund that extra sixty-six thousand dollars to give everyone their ask.
Oh.
And, but that would require you all create a budget amendment, which requires two sessions from what I understand. I think you can use today as a session, there'd be another one. But it could prolong getting the funds to the organization. So we, we made that decision, but we also wanted to say, this, this is our feeling because we have no way of saying, you deserve this amount and you deserve that amount. You're up and coming. You need to be less dependent upon the city. So we said, well, let's do this, and then we'll bring it to the council, see what your feelings are, what your decisions are, and then give us information in a directive to work on things and come back to you. But you're ultimately the ones that change, can give, decide to award less money anyway.
Sounds like y'all are well on your way to, to developing some criteria.
We are.
And if you're willing to continue to do that, this would be something that would carry us on for, for many, for many years, something we really haven't been able to, able to do.
Well, in talking with Lacey, you know, she works so much with grants, there's a lot of organizations that are very used to working with grants, and they, they have rubrics or formulas, things that you do, criteria to help the committee know how to score things and maybe say, you know, this year you were lacking this and this, and we're going to make our award this. Or, you know, there were some, because they're brand new, maybe don't give them their full ask. Have a, have it designated based on the length of their organization or how many times they've applied. So maybe, you know, the first time they apply, they're only allowed to receive five or ten thousand dollars. And then the city can watch the stewardship of the organization with taxpayer funds. And that way, it's like, there's a little check in balance there. And you guys feel comfortable, they want to apply again, they did a great job, they could apply for more money. So we didn't know if you wanted thresholds, like, how do we do that? There were a lot of questions, and I think the more questions we asked and tried to answer, the more we went down these rabbit holes.
So y'all need more, you're asking for more time?
We're, so we didn't know if you wanted us to keep working as a committee throughout the year because we felt like we could meet again to start creating guidelines and criteria, gathering information for next year, for, or to help the next set of people on this committee. But as far as this year's awards, we didn't feel comfortable cutting anyone's budget because we don't have a background that you guys have had over the years where they may ask for ninety thousand dollars, but you're worth them fifty. So that was, that was part of our concern.
Well, you weren't, you weren't cutting, they were asking for more additional funds. Y'all weren't, y'all, what I'm saying is, pretty much, how many of them were asking for more funds than last time? Were all of them asking for the same amount? I mean, you had, let's see, what is, total of six?
Yes.
One decreased and then?
Crime Stoppers, yeah, Crime Stoppers had a rubric, a formula based on population.
Okay.
And the number of students at Southeastern.
So they were asking for a little bit more?
It was easier. They asked for about a thousand dollars more, I think. But there was a set formula there that was easy to work with. Whereas when you asked other organizations, I couldn't, there, there wasn't a formula, there wasn't really a guideline. They just said, we expect to need this amount of money.
Okay, ask your question. Okay. I see six groups here that asked for money. And I did show up Friday to the meeting.
Yes.
But I really have a problem. The two black groups that asked for money, those the only two was there Friday.
Correct.
So why were they there Friday and nobody else?
So that was, that was actually another question once we started talking about it. You know, we, Tuesday, we were like, well, we're having a really hard time saying these organizations are asking for ninety thousand dollars and seventy-five thousand dollars, and there was no real budget there that showed, like, okay, give it to them. So we, we, they had, they had, their documentation was different, was, or was not as detailed as some of the other organizations. So we had more questions for them. Not, and that, that was part of it was, it's not just, it wasn't about they were a black organization. It was their packet had less detail than some of the others asking for more money. So we asked them to come in to explain to us or help us understand their organization and their ask, so that we can make a better decision.
Okay. And see, this is where I'm lost at. And I heard you all say that Friday. So Friday after I left, y'all had approved everything that everybody asked for. Now, it's today you asking for something different.
No, it's the same thing. It's exactly the same thing. The part of the issue, when we, when we talked about it on Friday, was that if we, we said, if we do this, we will be over budget. And so that could have been an opportunity for the organizations to say, well, so we can just get through this and get, get through this funding process, they could have taken less money or, you know, made a suggestion. But we said, well, how can we say, we have no set criteria. So if they were compliant and they did all the things that everyone else were asked to do, fair and equal says they did that. So how do we determine who gets less money and who does not? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I don't mind. Yeah. How you doing, Ms. Seals?
I'm good. Thanks, Ms. Excuse me. Um, basically what we are here for, all right, is to report the work of the committee, which, you're right, on Friday, the group met and came to a consensus to give each organization what they asked. And we agreed to that because we were unable, we didn't have time to set up the objective criteria that's needed to run a, a good, robust grants review process. And with that, we also thought about what it would take if you guys accepted our recommendation, because that means it's the sixty-six thousand dollars over budget and the process that you have to go through would delay the recipients getting their money. So we came to you with that to ask your guidance. We also know that whatever our recommendation is, you have the power to override that. So we knew that when we came with that, you might say, wait, that doesn't make sense. And then, we're hoping, that then y'all would go through the applications and make the awards this time. We do want to continue to the work because we do understand and appreciate the fact that you're giving us the opportunity to help the city make this a more objective process. So we want to finish that, but we wanted to come with this because of the reasons that she explained. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. So we saying, you all continue. So when you saying continue, you mean for the future, when this here come back up again?
Yes. So what we agreed to as a committee on Friday, which was our, only our second meeting, the first thing was to award each organization what they asked, and then we agreed that we would get back to And then we agreed that we would get back together as a group to continue to define that objective criteria for those awards. So those are the two things that the committee actually agreed to as a group. And now we're here telling you that and finding out from you what your thoughts are for us. Do we continue with what we agreed on? Do you want us to go back and look at those amounts again and come back with you with a different, come back to you with a different recommendation? We need your input is the bottom line.
Did y'all have any recommendation that would have stayed within budget?
No.
So y'all, sort of fifty thousand extra, y'all couldn't figure it out with, with, with the groups, nonprofits?
Right, so.
Sixty thousand.
So Mr. Wells's question to us about the two organizations that showed up on Tuesday, we discussed that when we realized that on, uh, the first meeting, that those were the two organizations. But if, I don't know if y'all have the applications. If you look at those applications, as Lauren said, it was easier, it was clearer on the other applications in terms of what services they provided and how those services can benefit the citizens of the city. That was very clear. The other two applications, we needed additional information. I tried to represent one of the organizations, UMX, but I thought it would be best for her to come and represent herself. So we invited her and then we asked Mr. Dunn to come to get additional information about his package. So that's, I mean, it just, it wasn't like, oh, these, like she said, oh, these are the black organizations, no. Because the organizations, we could see where each organization adds value to the city. It was just, we needed, you know, more information from each one.
I, I, yeah. I guess it would have been not, you know, to have two options, I guess, an option that fit within budget and a recommendation who would, you know, that would ask for more money.
Yes.
So we could have looked at, I mean, I don't know, we, I mean, y'all, I mean, but I mean, it'd been nice to be able to see where, you know, I mean, you can ask for a million dollars. I mean, don't mean you're going to get a million dollars, but I mean, I don't fault anybody for asking for, for a lot of money, you know? So I mean, um, you know, did, did anybody feel reasonable with any money that would have fit within budget?
We never got to that level of a discussion. It would have been nice, if you want to talk about what would have been nice. It would have been nice for us to have clearer direction from you when we began the work. You know, I think, and I'm, I'm just saying that, just putting it out there. It would have been very nice for us to have guidance from you.
Yeah.
So we did the best we could with what we had.
And I'm, and I'm listening, I, I do, these questions aren't directed
Oh, no, I'm not.
Or any, any, like, lack of anything.
No, no, no.
I, you know, at these boards, they, they do not pay anything, that you volunteer your time to do that. And I appreciate everybody who stepped up to the plate, that's here or not here. So I mean, I understand that. So I'm just asking questions, just to get a understanding, try to hopefully, you know, stay within budget would be nice, you know, but, uh.
I didn't mean to come off the wrong way, but it just.
Sometimes I ask questions, you may think I'm, but I'm.
Oh, I'm gonna say this here, Ms. Sandra.
Shauna.
Sandra. Sandra, welcome to the City of Hammond. What you going through, I've been going through it for the last three and a half years. A lot of stuff I don't know. So when I ask questions, try to get questions, I be in the same boat. So that being said, because once the city had asked us to put somebody on the committee, I know I did. And so in the process of me saying that, I don't know what y'all pulled out, one meeting, two meeting, three meetings, and four meetings. So I did what they had asked me. But on the four groups that I see, how much was they awarded, the first four groups, or the first four groups that y'all approved of? How much was they awarded?
Their ask, the amount they've asked. Ninety thousand for TAM.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty for Louisiana Children's, that's our recommendation. They haven't been awarded anything.
Okay.
All right. Seventy-five for UMX, thirty for Child Advocacy Services, eleven thousand, one hundred seven for Crime Stoppers, and five thousand for the Humane Society.
Okay, so take UMX out and take, uh, the Black Heritage Center out. And how much, how much would that leave if you take them two out?
Okay, so numbers are not my friend.
Okay, I think I come up with ninety-eight.
Okay.
I come up with ninety-eight thousand. So if we stay in the range, so the last, the last two groups is, uh, the African American Center, uh, and UMX, which done an awesome job for downtown, not getting the recognition that they should. Uh, even took downtown to, what, y'all went to Virginia? Where did y'all go to?
Richmond, Virginia.
Richmond, Virginia, did an awesome job in bringing the city award and stuff. Uh, I know about both groups, especially the, uh, Tansuwa, uh, African American Center. I know about them because they're in my district. So they had ninety-eight thousand left from what I, from what I added up. Am I right?
That's right.
Okay, so you all couldn't stay within that ninety-eight thousand, to split it between the both of them? Because I'm saying, that's where we don't have to come up, giving out another sixty-six thousand.
Okay, I understand what you're, yes. We did not, we were not able to get to that level of a discussion on Friday, because the second meeting turned more into a public forum. You were there.
Yes.
And so that's when we, you heard the discussion.
Yes.
So we did not get to that level. So what I'm hearing maybe is that the council may be ready to, to reject our recommendation, and that's fine for the amounts, and you were trying to work it now. But we just need to know if you want us to continue with the development of the guidelines for the process.
I wouldn't say reject, I would just say, see if you could get within the, try to stay with, get an option to stay within budget.
Okay, so you're giving us?
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
So what the council could do, because it would take two meetings to do this, you could introduce the budget amendment tonight for the additional funding. It would go to the next meeting, which would be a public hearing about that money. In the meantime, the Grants Committee could convene and meet together and come up with an option that stays within budget, so that you would hear that option as well as this first option within that public hearing. And then you could make your final decision at the next meeting.
Do you think y'all would be able to meet again before next council meeting? You think y'all would be able to organize, I mean, that's kind of, you think y'all would be able to do that, or that's going to be kind of pushing it?
No, 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 probably so, because it only takes three of the five to, uh, make a quorum, a quorum, to make decisions. So I think we have three. We have different people with different obligations.
And y'all not able to do that on Zoom, huh? That, does that have to be a public?
I don't think legally we can. I think we have to.
I didn't know if, so because of short notice or not, I didn't know if, uh.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna say this here. If you all meet again, like, some, everybody will have to be cut in order to be fair. My opinion, my opinion only. Could UMX and Tansuwa Parish, um, Tansuwa, uh, African Heritage Center, could each one of them settle, split into ninety-eight thousand? And the reason I'm saying this here, that's where it's not fair. Let me say this here. Everybody asks for something, they received it. Now the two black groups that didn't meet the criteria that, I don't say you all or the city was looking for, y'all had additional questions for them?
I wouldn't say they didn't meet criteria.
Okay.
They met the basic criteria.
Uh-huh.
We had questions about their application. And so it's hard for me to explain that to you without you actually seeing those applications. If you saw all six of them, you would understand what we're saying. Some were very clear in terms of meeting, you know, criterias as far as what the benefit is to the city. And others were, were somewhat nebulous, like, you know? So we needed to hear from the representatives of those organizations in their words. So I wouldn't say they didn't meet the, the criteria. And then when you talk about fair, that's what we're trying to do, is to create a process that's fair. So that we're not saying, okay, we're going to cut this one by X amount of dollars, and then we don't have any way to justify that kind of decision. We need an objective way to do that, so people can see it and see that there's no emotion in it, you know, that it's all.
If, if I could, that's, that is why I was, you know, this committee, I believe, was formed, is that in the past years, for this council, previous councils, there hasn't seemed to be a lot of, um, thought put into what the amount is. You know, one time someone asked for something and then we gave them five thousand more than they even asked for. And why do we do that? I don't know. Um, and so I, I applaud you guys and I thank you, obviously, for your time. I, I love the idea that y'all will continue your work and develop some criteria. And I talked to Lauren about some of that, and I think that that is a great idea, so that we can put some procedure and process behind this, because it is taxpayer dollars. I think that I said publicly, but definitely to Lauren, I will, I hope we can get to the place that the nonprofit committee gives a recommendation and that's it. Because the point is, we're taking the politics out of it, right? I don't want to be campaigned and asked by that community and that community and that organization to, hey, we need this, can we make sure, I don't want it to be up to us. I would love it if we could, and, and it's going to, it's not going to be this year, right? It'll, hopefully, in future years, we can say, the committee has this criteria, they've met this criteria. Oh, you didn't have that document, sorry, you can't, you know, their points taken off, or I don't know about this grant process. But to me, I think that makes sense, because we can take the politics out of it for the council, take the politics out of it for the mayor, and be fair to people based on standards that they can understand. So obviously, we're not there this year for that. So I'm not sure where, where, how we solve this problem. I, I don't love the idea of going over budget, but I understand we have given y'all that problem, right? Because we didn't give you the criteria on how to calculate the amounts. So, um, I guess I'll, I'll stand by what the, what I, what I want to do is, is, you know, vote the way the committee recommends. Um, but again, I'm, I'm not super comfortable with that, being that it's over budget. And also had, I know every, you know, maybe a couple of them asked for more than they thought they would get. We all know that happens, you know? This one said, I'm going to ask for ten more than I got last year, because maybe I'll get it. And then the other ones didn't, because they had an expectation that the council was going to cut them by ten. So is that really fair to them, because they didn't take the opportunity to ask for more? All around, it's unfair, and I don't know how to solve that problem. Um, but that's why, a couple of things are sitting uneasy with just giving everyone what they asked for, because not everyone maybe expected that they would get their ask.
Oh.
That's a lot, yeah.
It is a lot. It is an uneasy feeling. And that's why we have to have the objective criteria. Um, you guys may have to, how do you say? Eat that, we as taxpayers may have to eat that sixty-six thousand dollars, or you prolong the amount of time it'll take you to make the awards.
Well, all I'm going to say is, I think we need more structure to it, and that, I just want to make it clear that the council increased the one seventy-five to two, uh, twenty-five. So we actually was, you know, giving more money. But my whole, my whole thought process here, so what about next year, is it going to go to three hundred? Next year is going to go to four hundred? Next year is going to go to five hundred? So where, where, where does the city want to be? Do we want to be at a million dollars donating to nonprofits? Or, you know, where, you know, where do you, where do you feel comfortable at, at stopping on, you know, on increasing the, the limit? So I think we increased it fifty, plus the ten reduction, that's sixty thousand. So, I mean, I, I think that was, you know, I think it was pretty, you know, generous, I mean, increasing, you know? So I mean, um, you know, so that's, that's all I, I had to say. But structure would definitely, I think, fix a lot of this, and it definitely is going to happen in a, in a few weeks. Us creating a whole policy and, and format to, to go through for future. It's probably going to take all this year, if y'all continue to meet, to actually get something that, that works, hopefully works. And y'all might continue to improve it every year.
How are we with timeline on who's depending on this and? So that's what, that's what we were up against, is that, you know, historically, well, we're up against two things historically. One, and this is, this is why they kind of keep coming back to the council, because in the past, the decisions have been made to have much higher awards for, for some people. And I, and I realize we're in, um, discussions about dropping down that reliance on the city. We, they didn't know how much purview they have. Like, if, if, you know, do we cut everybody, the most you can receive is fifty thousand, or the most you can receive is thirty thousand, or whatever. Um, another option that we discussed at, at some point was making small awards, but making them, maybe, here's your, here's your first three months or your first six months award, and then reapply for additional funding and see how that goes. Um, there was discussion about maybe awarding a specific project or a specific program. That's another way that grant awards are made historically throughout different funders, focused on that, rather than what the city has typically done is, is a much broader, kind of general, general maintenance, general operation costs, where all eligible.
So, so Ms. Lacy, okay, the city budget. And we was part of the budget meeting. How much did the city go over budget during the budget meeting? Oh, you know, have a figure of hand? I'm talking about when the city, when we did the budget for the city. Not talking about the nonprofit.
No one's gone over budget, because you were passing the budget then. And so you were, you were setting two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be used.
No, 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 not, not for the nonprofit. I'm talking about the city itself. When we was doing the budget for, uh, the lawn service, the budget for the airport, the budget for, uh, each district, you know, we had a budget, right?
Twenty twenty-three budget.
Yes.
And we had a surplus, we didn't go over budget.
Okay, then, okay, so we had a surplus. And this is what I'm saying, to make a, I think I have an answer for this solution, because we're not going to talk about this all night, okay? Uh, we don't want to get a sixty-six thousand over. We don't want to go over, because we did set a budget. And we had already went up on the amount during the budget. So I think those two groups need to actually consider, and I don't know how much they asking for, but I come up with ninety-eight thousand that they had left in that budget with the four groups. Yeah, and so I come up with ninety-eight thousand, and for me doing my math, and, uh, Andre, you might have to help me out. I think that's forty-nine thousand each.
Yeah.
Okay, that's forty-nine. So it need to be a question, can you all live with forty-nine thousand each?
Um, I could speak on that if you want me to.
Could you come up to the mic?
So the short answer is yes. And the long answer is, UMX, we're currently working with organizations, the same packet I sent to you guys, basically saying that we're going to be bringing programs and services. And we need to hire more staff for those. I'm currently officially sitting on, um, Urban League Advisory Business Board, which means they're going to be bringing these businesses and services to Hammond. I need to have the right staff. I need to be able to hire the staff. And those are the funds that we're requesting for, for these programs and services that is currently coming. We have a meeting scheduled for August thirty-first. We're having a roundtable discussion where we're requesting for thirty or forty businesses to come and, you know, tell us the issues that they're facing, and we're going to be bringing those programs and services. So we're already working on that. So like I said, the short answer is yes. But, um, if there was any option of the seventy-five, because that was the requested amount based on the professionals that we're going to need and the different services that we're going to be bringing, so.
So, I think I like your short answer. What your short answer was? Yes?
The short answer is yes.
Okay, then. Uh, Mr. Dunn, could you live with the short answer or you got a long answer?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I can give you a short.
Uh, I can give you a short answer, I can give you a long answer. But basically, just the insurance and you saying 49, just the insurance itself is $20,000. So it leaves a very limited amount to function with the rest of the year.
All right, and we all know, all of us sitting up here, we know about the insurance. We know about all the bills because everything that went up, not only just on you all, it done went up on everybody. And so Max, again, could you live with the 49 for right now? Just for you, Mr. Dunn.
I would have to go back and reanalyze everything and see whether or not I can. I can't say that we can, I can't say we can't at this moment.
Okay, because I don't, and I'm quite sure not only me, but the rest of the city councilmen, I don't think we're going to add 66 more thousand to that budget. And that's the whole idea we formed the committee. And the committee was, we didn't give y'all everything y'all needed. But this, this we go through every year. So I think it come from the administration to the city councilmen now to you all.
What, what about the option of funding a quarter of the asks, which is well below the budget item and having, you know, four months, three months, excuse me, to assess and come up with a final number? I mean, I guess that's two options, right? We, I, I just, it's not sitting easy with me that the two that are being cut. Everyone's getting exactly what they want and the two that are being cut.
Well, let me ask you this.
You know, I don't want, I don't want the allegations of, of us being unfair.
Yeah, well, I don't know, the cut, I mean, they're, they're asking.
They're not getting awarded the amount they ask.
They're not, they're not, they're not getting cut, we're not decreasing their value. What were they getting before and what are they getting now?
You're cutting their request.
They're cutting their request, but we're not, but we're not cutting from what they've been getting.
It doesn't matter how you spin it, that's my point.
They're getting, they're getting funds, a good bit of, what did, what did UMX get last year?
Nothing.
Okay, what are they getting now? Oh, well, if this goes 49,000, right? Okay, and then African American Museum, how much were they getting last year?
50.
And what would they be getting, what would they be getting?
49,000.
49,000, so then 49 plus the 50, so almost, almost 100,000.
No, that would be a cut of 1,000.
The black hair is missing out on a thousand.
Oh, so they're, okay, all right. I thought y'all were splitting, I thought you were splitting up the overage because we increased it 23% given more.
Yeah, uh-uh, see, I'm going to write things down so I can keep going with me.
Okay, so they're actually cutting, okay.
So that, that's kind of, do you see where our dilemma was? I feel like Solomon splitting the baby.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the baby you're splitting is, are the two African American organizations. And that's not right.
Right, and I agree. And that's why we said we don't feel it's fair. And part of the other thing we, we talked about that day too, and that said, well, why are the two African American organizations the only two here? And we said, well, because we had questions, but then we really didn't think about it. Because, I mean, we met on Tuesday, we really had no clue what we were getting into. And no, I mean, we sat there in red packets for 30 minutes and tried to make notes. And Mike Williams was there, he was a councilman. He was invaluable because he could give us some insight as, as to what he went through as a councilman making these decisions. But, you know, once we thought about it, we were like, well, it would be good to hear from Child Advocacy Services or Crime Stoppers or whatever. And we had no real history, we had to ask what their, what they were awarded last year, what their ask was and what they were awarded. It just, we couldn't make a decision and we wanted it to be fair. And so we thought about it, we're like, well, maybe we should have another meeting and ask CAC, well, you asked the year before for 20, you were given 25, this year you're asking 30. I didn't really want to get into all this in here, but.
It's public record anyway, it's fine.
So, so, so it's like, well, how did they create their ask? And I asked, you know, African American Heritage Museum and UMX that. I already knew that for Crime Stoppers because it's clearly laid out. Tangi Humane Society didn't really have that. They were, this is the first time they've ever applied. I looked at their financials, they have about a $50,000, 50 to 60,000 dollar a year budget. And they asked for five grand. It's like, well, if, if you could say to them, well, if you could be awarded 20, they would probably ask for 20. So it, it felt unfair to say, we're going to give them the large sum and then we hadn't talked to these other organizations too. It, like Carly said, it could be, you know, if you could ask for, you know, when I was 12 years old, I told my dad I wanted a red BMW convertible when I turned 16. He goes, you better get a job, girl. So if we can, if you can ask for anything, but then the council decides, it's kind of like, well, how do we decide? How do you make that decision? And, and that's why we kept saying, like, what do you feel comfortable with us doing? And we didn't want to be the, the people that were cut, the two organizations that were cut, to be the African American organizations because it already had a perception that we were being unfair. And that was so far from the truth. I think I told Ms. Denise that came to speak. The, the thing is, we're not here to tell them no. We want to tell you yes and we want to understand how to tell you yes and at what amount. And we just kept coming back to, we were not sure what to do. And we really had no, we didn't have any legal guidance either. We, you know, it said, Lacy reached out to Mr. Kudrain over the weekend and so we, we didn't know if we could meet again. We had no, we really didn't know a lot of anything. So that's why we said, we're going to take our thoughts and our issues and bring them to you to help us decide. Or like Mr. Wells was just doing and say, well, this one gets this and this one's this. Well, why don't we take this overage and then just cut it in half? That's what we wanted from you all. And then if you want to send us back to the, if you want to decide that tonight, that's great. If you want to send us back to the drawing board like Lacy said for, you know, to deliberate over the next few weeks, we can do that too.
I don't want to.
I don't like being over budget. It bothered me. I mean, I've worked with budgets. It, it hurt my soul. But I could, I had, we had no resolution and so that's why we said, let's do this. You're not going to like it, but we didn't like the decision either. We just had no clear way of who to cut and how to cut.
When they asked why we only pulled those two organizations, they came back and said, we should hold every organization accountable for what they have received. So I don't care who it is, they should have shown up too. So that was an aha moment for us. So we were learning as we, and this is only two days that we had, but a lot happened in those two days. So we wanted to be fair. I, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Wells, but I'm not sure if cutting those two organizations is the right answer either. Does that make sense?
No, if we don't.
You got to make a decision, right?
I, I know. I know, and see, when it comes to decisions and hard decisions, as councilmen, we have to know how to make a hard decision, we have to know how to make a good decision, we have to know how to make a right decision. And we can make wrong decisions too. That, that being said, I'm going to say it again, what I recommend, that you all take the 49,000 each. I know it's below y'all budget. But I'm asking y'all, please trust the process. Brandon, what you say? I mean, y'all have to say something.
This isn't, I mean, we aren't voting on this.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, no, we're not voting on it.
I'm just making sure.
Yeah, you take the 49,000. Because. Can I say young lady? Okay, the young lady and I agree with her. We don't really like to go over budget. And right now, we're going over budget because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers' money. And what we're looking at, more groups can come in, more groups can come in, more groups can come in. So every time groups come in, it's making the process harder and harder. Then from us coming up here, the first time being a city councilman, the city was trying to cut the budget. And our first time being up here, we didn't want it cut because we didn't want none, none of the nonprofits to lose money. But look where we at now. Oh, there going to be next steps for y'all and more steps added. So, no, you all did a good job. And, and once again, I could say, I could say thank you, you know? I was glad Mike Williams was on there, a, a city councilman earlier. And so he helped out. I was glad Ms. Lacy was out there to help you all out. Y'all did a good job, you know? These are some of the decisions that we normally go through. So we did, you all took the weight off our shoulders. And somehow y'all done kind of slipped it back in on us. But y'all did a good job and I can say, once again, thank you so much. Volunteer too, say that, didn't get paid for it, volunteer y'all.
I think that, yeah, that'd be great. And also if we can make sure the administration is in on that because this is a two-part system, right? You guys should have some say so in some of these nonprofits. This is not just the council, obviously, so.
Yeah, I think one of the things that y'all, that y'all have learned for sure is that the, the better your criteria, the less personality comes into it. It becomes cut and dry and I think that needs to be your ultimate goal, that, you know, it really, you meet the criteria, you get so many points, yada, yada, yada. And at the end of the day, these are the awards. There's no, there's no personality about it. It, it, these are, these are the awards. And I think you have to keep in mind too that, I know we were talking about budget earlier, but every year, when the council goes through and the administration goes through budgets, depending on where we're going to be, there's probably going to be a different dollar amount that we will allocate for that, depending on how the, depending on how the budget works for that, for that year to make it balance. And I think the other thing that you, that you have to keep in the back of your mind is, and I don't remember the numbers, but what is it, something like 300 nonprofit organizations in Tangi Bow Parish? So, you know, you got to keep that in the back of your mind. It's not always going to be these six or seven or 10. There'll be a day where it'll get a lot, it'll get a lot higher. But again, thank y'all so much for, for everything that y'all done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, introduction of ordinance is set for public hearing. Introduction number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to extend the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of subdivision plots, site development plans, or zoning amendments for multifamily housing within the City of Hammond for the additional 90 days.
Yeah, we had a moratorium out in place for six months. We were working, you know, towards, the Housing Committee is working towards the consulting they hired, getting some results during that time. We're going to need more time on it. You know, there's a couple pending ordinances that are going to the Planning and Zoning Board. And, you know, I thought it would be good to, to, to request an extension for, for 90 days to hopefully get, get some, some feedback and results and, and improve the situation.
Is the Housing Committee supposed to be done in 90 days or, or just, why, what's the 90 day for?
Well, 90 days, well, because instead of, I mean, we could do six months, but I, instead of doing something long, we, I wanted to, you know, do something.
You just chose 90 days.
Yeah, 90 days, because it may be six months. I don't want them to rush on what they're doing. We, you know, we don't have a city planner right now. We have the two ordinances going to UDC, so a lot of things are, are in the works right now. And the whole process was not to shut down growth, but have smart growth and maybe hopefully improve some systems to where we're more prepared for a large abundance of, of construction going on at one time.
I just, you, you often have asked me why I picked a number out of the air. So I'm just finding out if you picked a number out of the air.
No, because I, yeah, we were just, went over, you know, I figured six months be really what we need, but I didn't want to hear a bunch of moaning and groaning, so I went with 90 days.
Okay, just asking, very good.
That's why we went.
Joe? Evening, Council. On the Housing Committee question, we're, we've got our next update coming August the 60th. I think that's the 16th, next Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds right.
And we'll get our next update from civics. Just wanted to be clear again on this ordinance, you know, that the Housing Committee has nothing to do with this moratorium. That we're not recommending the moratorium. Again, I would ask, stepping away from the Housing Committee, I would ask that, you know, we've already been at six months now of, of nothing more than three units being able to be built.
Four, four.
It's up to three, isn't it?
It's four, four plus, four plus units. There was four plus units.
Okay.
And it was, mixed use was not affected, long 50/50, commercial was not affected by that yet.
Okay, I think.
Are you, are you building apartments right now, Joe? Is that, is that, is it, okay? I didn't know if you had any issue or not, okay?
There's no issue with me.
Okay.
I have an issue with property rights of people having that, people that do have property that have been waiting to build. They've waited six months now. Now they're waiting another 90 days and possibly another 90 days, even if it's a, a fourplex. So if the, if the large multifamily development is what we're trying to fix here, we also are holding back the property rights of people that are wanting to build maybe a fourplex. I thought the ordinance read three units or more.
I thought it was, I thought it was four.
And look, I'm looking at it, it says three or more.
Yeah. So even, even a triplex can't be built right now.
Well, you can do a, you can, you can propose a variance if, if there's somebody that's stopping for, you know, something that's one unit extra. I don't think that's, I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody, but you can always come to the Planning and Zoning or, or, or the council to, to ask a variance. Is that not right, Andre? Yeah, so that does not limit anything that, I mean, that there's, there's no infringing on rights. This is more term that's used in a lot of, a lot of growing cities to try to, to help improve. I've, I've had an outpour from my district, outpour of things and, and, and great job. Let's try to get a hold of things. So this is not to hurt the community in any which way.
And a, a variance is not a problem either. I'm just saying that the moratorium is so broad that when somebody looks at it, it's like, I can't do it right now unless I go through this additional step of a process to, to be able to do that. So I don't know if this ordinance, extending it, could clear that language up a little bit before we extended another three months and then, because the civics report's not going to be ready till December. Is what the calendar is showing on the, on steps that we're stepping out on it. So if there's anything that the council can do to, to clear that language up, it would be appreciated.
And Wednesday is the 17th, sorry, the 17th, not the 16th, yeah.
Ron Matthews, 905 Delmar. I, I agree with Joe. This, the moratorium has nothing to do with the Housing Committee. However, there are several milestones that the Housing Committee are addressing that would affect, you know, that has, runs parallel with the moratorium. I think that at the point where, where we are with the moratorium is, one, is not stopping anyone from putting an application in. And I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have not gotten one request, not one. So secondly, I think this still is an opportunity for us. And in the council, you all have tackled a lot of bears over the past few months and with. And with, um, election time is on top of you as well, reelection. Um, I do think there are several things that we, it's an opportunity for us to try to capture with this moratorium. One is, uh, one of the things that we set out, set out to do in the beginning was to try to increase the quality and aesthetics of our multi-family developments as they come to the city. Um, I don't know whether that's by ordinance or by some type of architect review or whatever the case may be. Uh, we do need to try to sink our teeth into that. Um, one of the things I'm, I've already spoken to some of our, um, planning and zoning commissioners about is for us to try to assist in this effort, uh, put together some bullet points that we can hopefully bring to the council and you guys can review it in order to help us, uh, maybe come to some sort of resolution to conclude our, the moratorium process and make sure we have some teeth in it that's going to make our multi-family development throughout the city of Hammond better, not just in some areas, but in all areas of the city. So I, I would, I would ask that we would continue the process and if, and ninety days is a short ask. Uh, I think we should ask for six months, but, uh, ninety days is, is a pretty simple ask. Uh, that would give us some opportunity to give us some time to really work on this a little bit more. I have not heard of anyone standing on the wall waiting. Uh, it may be somebody, but they haven't come to us in the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, but it would give us an opportunity as a city to take a look at our multi-family, uh, ordinances relative to multi-family and possibly put a little more teeth in them. A unified look across the city is something I'd like to see. That's just me. Uh, just came back from vacation, so you all hadn't seen me in a little while, but, um, uh, visited a city that was really an outlandish for me. It's Greenville, South Carolina, and the uniformity across that city is just speaks volume. And even the, the multi-family areas, some of them just fit so nicely because of the architecture pleasing to the eye that you have. So that's some of the stuff we want to try to do here in Hammond, I think. And if nothing else, we'll offer it up. Uh, you as a council may not agree with it, uh, and that's fine. But I think, uh, as I heard, um, our city attorney said once, and it stayed with me, in the spirit of Hammond. Um, and I, I'm one who loves to do things the right way and do things very nice. Everybody like to live nice, uh, in clean environment, nice environment. So this is an opportunity for us to step this up a little bit and make sure that we are allowing and delivering a quality of life that's pleasing to, throughout the whole Hammond. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, uh, do you think we may need to do some, some kind of work session maybe with, with the planning and zoning? And, and, and possibly try to, you know, move forward with, with some of the, the points? I know I sent an email out a few months back with some of the, with to Matt Sanifer, and, you know, try to get some, some points maybe improved that, that could possibly, you know, uh, look at with y'all that, that might improve the process of, of developing.
The commission is very, has, has this as a very positive thing.
Yeah.
All the commissioners think it's very positive. And, uh, I'm going to encourage them to, let's come together and, and form a work session and invite the entire council, whoever would like to attend, uh, and so we can put some bullet points out there and see if something we can all walk around and, and agree to.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, why are you up there? Why are you up here? Uh, another thing too, I would like for y'all to look into and consider, we're still having sewer issues in District Three. So, I heard Mr. Joe, uh, speaking, but we definitely, I don't, and I know it's, the sewer not only affecting District Three, is going into other districts also because several people have reached out to me talking about the sewer problem that they're having in their area also. So please take this under consideration. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Any questions, any comment from the council?
Name's Ryan Logs and project manager for Barry O and Associates and here to represent Mr. Chad Perkins. He's doing several projects in this city and in, uh, outside the city. Um, it's come to our attention, uh, on a specific project over on JW Davis. There's been some concerns about the city asking Chad to bore or cut the, the sewer line. And on, we were wondering if we could possibly talk about pioneering a change to where the, the city of Hammond, since they own the, the sewer, possibly could we pay a impact fee and have them do the work? Uh, that would keep us from having liabilities, um, that kind of thing.
So are you, are you referring to this, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure you're referring to the sewer line being in the middle of the road and you got to, or on the other side, you gotta bore through the road to say, yeah, okay.
Correct.
Which, I mean, to tap in, to tap into sewer line, I mean, I think, you know, I went through this the other day. I mean, I really, I really think that if it's on a, I mean, that boring underneath the road to the other one, that's a whole nother story. But if, if a city sewer line is in the middle of a road, city street, I, I, I think it would be good practice for the city to be very involved in, in tapping into their own line since it's sewer line.
Yes, sir.
And instead of having a hundred contractors messing with a sewer line and having to go back and check a sewer line, seeing if it was tied in right, if it wasn't tied in right. Now, I could see the homeowner developer going up to the sewer tie, tie-in. That's, that's correct, I think. But I think it opens up a lot, a lot of liability for other contractors to work on a sewer line in the middle of the road of a city of the city sewer. So that is something that I was mind-blown that that's how the process is with the city of Hammond. Um, so I, I don't know if that's something that, what would take to get looked in further. Um, Mr. Ryan, that's in a Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't know if that really goes y'all, but, I mean, you go to other cities and states. I mean, is that common practice to, for the, the homeowner to just work on a tap-in to the city road? City sewer line in the middle of the road? Thank you. Thank you for bringing that comment up.
I think in different municipalities, it's different, but in, for the most part, typically there is a impact fee. You all heard me say the word impact fee before. Um, and that's something that, um, definitely we could look at, but that's a process in order to put that in place. And I don't think it's something you can put in place just for one specific project. We have to put it in place through, uh, the bill and code enforcement in order to have that. Then we have to assess how, how are we going to determine what the impact is and yada, yada, yada. And that, that we have to bring in our city engineer and come up with the formulas to, to, uh, come up with the impact would be.
Isn't it kind of odd to have a contractor ask for impact fees?
Uh, yeah, I was shocked. I'm a contractor. I, I just paid a pretty large one over in Alabama, so. Um, impact fees can be very, very, very large items. However, when it comes down to liability, um, the cities would have the better advantage in doing this work than an individual contractor because they keep the, um, the as it, as-is drawings, as-built drawings, et cetera, on the, on the city. Um, and they would have the advantage of being able to make those taps. So, um, definitely something, uh, Lacy, we probably can talk to code enforcement and utility department.
Actually, I think it needs to be talked with water and sewer department and with our city engineer.
City engineer.
So we could, we could address that at a planning meeting.
I would love to, to discuss that and see the pros and cons because, I mean, I see a lot of, you know, liability and a lot of reasons that, that would be, it would be a good idea to possibly start bringing that in-house and having an assessment of if it's going to be a thousand dollars to tap in or five hundred, but for the city to do it.
It can get, get pretty large, um, real quick. Um, especially when you get into multi-family type of developments, it's assessed by the unit.
Oh, yeah. I was just, I was considering just a residential home site, but yeah, I mean, it could get really hard.
There are formulas, there are, there are formulas already in place that many city engineers utilize in order to develop those impact fees. And that's something we definitely.
So we, we already have some impact fees in our ordinances laid out. So those are already assessed.
So maybe we look at an expansion of that.
Yeah.
Let's do that and let me know when. We'll sit down and, and make that happen.
Yeah, that would be good. Yep.
I have a question on this, maybe what Sam was saying, this runs to the middle of the street?
Well, sometimes the sewer lines in the city are right in the middle of the road. And then so what we would do is you would, how they have it set up now is you would pay a fee. They'd come to the city to come cut the road asphalt, come cut it. But then you as a homeowner would pay to, to tie into that, to that city sewer line in the middle of the road, on city property, on the city road. So that, that's what, that's what, and then he was talking about the city sewer line actually was on the opposite side of the road. So he would have to bore under the road to get to the other side. Sometimes they're in the middle of the road, sometimes they're on that side, and sometimes you look up and they may be in front of your lot, but not, not a lot of times.
Okay.
I think make a, make a long story short, the impact fees, I think that'll help out a whole lot. They actually building in District Three. And I did, they did reach out to me and I told them, come to the city council, let the city council know. Because a lot of time, things take place and we don't even be aware of it. The city itself, and I'll make it real simple, what they have to do is bust into the road. And so what I'm looking at now, a lot of the roads just been asphalt. And now, we got the street over there right now, they just asphalt the street and had a water leak. So the city had to bust into the line, bust into the street to get to the line to repair. So what the, uh, engineers asking for, I think is wonderful. And right now, since we having so many issues with the sewer, why not let the city take on that responsibility and run the line up to the property line? And that's, and so even billing out, out of the parish, and I'd have been a part of the process. That's how most of the parish do it. The cities do it. They will actually run, they will bust, tap into the city line and run the line to the property line. And so, but knowing when they run that pipe, that pipe to the property line, that's where you tie into it, uh, plumber or whoever. But thank you, sir, for coming up here. I thought y'all forgot, but I was gonna call and remind you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions on this introduction? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two at five-thirty.
Introduction number two.
In accordance with Office of Justice Program's grant requirements, the introduction of an ordinance to update Rule X one dash six, Information Security of the City's IT Policy and Procedure Manual to include a procedure for reporting an actual or imminent breach of personnel, a personally identifiable information associated with an OJP-dash-funded program or activity or a federal information system used or operated by the city of Hammond, by the city, Charles Hammond. I mean, Charles Broshire.
I realize that's a lot. This is very similar to, um, a couple of policy updates I brought to the council about two council meetings back. We're in the process of going through some policies, updating those policies. Some just require a resolution, some require department head approval. This one, because it was approved by an ordinance, requires an ordinance to, to amend. Um, so that's what this is about. Um, the Office of Justice Program, which typically awards funds to our police department, requires that if we have a program or activity that's grant-funded and we're collecting personal information, if we become aware of a breach or an imminent breach of that information, it's getting leaked, somebody hacked into the system, we need to report that to the funder. That's basically what this is. Uh, it's a requirement of our grants, so we're inserting it where most appropriate in our IT policy, um, where the Hammond Police Department manual actually refers to this. So rather than put it there and lose it there, it's, that, that policy is actually referred to, um, here, so. Questions?
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells? Public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two at five-thirty.
Thank you. I'll say again then.
Thank you, Charles.
Final adoption of ordinance.
Final adoption of an ordinance to declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below. To sell on govdeal.com, John Deere backhoe model four-one-zero-G, four backhoe tires, nineteen ninety-seven Chevrolet chassis panel truck, unit six-one-one, two Still BR three-eighty blowers, Still BR three-fourty blowers, Jana Swallow.
Good evening. We're just asking for final approval to surplus and sell on govdeals.
Anyone from the public? Any other questions I can say from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Thank you. Thank you, Jana.
Thank you. Resolution number one.
A resolution to appoint Robert Dishler to the Hammond Historic District Commission for the remainder of a four-year term ending on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Mayor Pena Pinto.
Mr. Robert, would you come up? So Mr. Robert has forty-six years of experience in construction, uh, more than construction consultants. He's also worked for Sterling. Uh, he has history, uh, with historic and tax credits review. Um, he has a BA in, uh, architecture from USL, which is now ULL.
No, it's still USL.
But, uh, it is it? Yeah. And.
My heart, it's USL.
That's right. My mother's too. Uh, I'm asking, uh, council to, uh, to approve Mr. Robert, uh, on the historic board.
Mr. Robert, would you like to have a word?
Uh, well, this is a, this is an opportunity for me to volunteer, volunteer, to, uh, get involved in the city a little bit more than I have been. I've been on the road a lot with the previous, uh, employers I had. But, uh, I'm trying now, after seventeen years of living here, to get more involved in the city. And I think with my expertise and, and my past, um, especially with the historic information and, and inspections I've done in the past, I think I can, uh, can help out this, this, this board. And, uh, being a commissioner is just something that I, I like to do at this time.
Seems like you have a good resume. And, um, I appreciate you having interest.
Thank you for, um, being willing to do this. It's, that's a fairly challenging board, so I'm sure you'll do great, though.
Well, I've, I've read all of the, uh, the, the requirements twice now, so, um, they do have a challenge. But I think the, the city is well worth it.
Absolutely. I'm with you more.
We thank you for going in with the challenge. Anyone else from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Robert.
Thank you. Resolution number two.
A resolution to approve Shacks located at two zero one East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, to obtain a permit to sell on-premise high-low alcohol. The owner is Greco LLC, Casey Daigle.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Coming for y'all this afternoon to get, uh, seek approval for our on-premise alcohol permit for Shacks Restaurant, going in at two oh one East Thomas. It's formerly where Splitter Burger was, and before that, it was where Tacos and Bear was. I have Mr. Luke Gre, Mr. Luke Greer in the back, the manager slash owner of the business, if y'all have any questions for him. But he's done everything we've asked in a timely manner, so we just come up for y'all for this approval.
Anyone else from the public? Any concerned, a question from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Resolution number three.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of a M-seven-zero-six-zero-HDC utility cab tractor for forty-one thousand, five hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents for the Water and Sewer Department, state contract, four-four-zero-zero-zero-one-seven-eight-five-two, Jana Swallow.
This tractor was actually approved in twenty-twenty-three budget. Um, the Water and Sewer Department found this tractor that suits their needs for the plant. So we're just asking council's approval for the purchase.
Is it within budget?
Yes.
And what's it used for?
Um, actuality of all, I know it's bush hogging. I mean, more of that I don't know. Uh, Mr. Palermo couldn't be here. He has a family emergency, so, um, they were actually at Children's Hospital in New Orleans.
Anyone from the public? Pleasure to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jana.
Resolution number four.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of a Paratac heavy extrication kit for fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, cheap folks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is, uh, for our heavy vehicle extrication, uh, stabilization and lifting. Uh, it's kind of a.
of an all-in-one package, uh, designed for larger vehicles, uh, if, you know, say, a, a concrete truck turns over on a smaller vehicle, this has the, the, the weight bearings to be able to hold that up and even lift that, that heavy of a, a object a little bit safer. It gives us some better options than what we currently have. Uh, so, this was just a goal of mine to try to improve the safety, uh, out there on the street, and this, it's a little, little pricey, but it's well worth it for what it has, it's very flexible as well, and it also goes into, if we have some type of building collapse, Lord forbid another hurricane coming through, where we have to, to, to go in and do some, uh, some structural stabilization and things like that, this gives us that additional option, a little bit faster than using wood and other things like that, where we have to set up and do cutting. So, it gives us a lot of different options in this kit, and it's going to be a, a great addition, uh, to the fire department, if y'all see fit.
Chief, thank you for sending the email with the pictures, so I could get an idea what this was, because I.
Very hard to explain.
No idea what that is. Uh, what, what do you, what do you guys use now, um, if you needed this ability?
So, right now, we have, uh, we have several trailers, uh, and they're full of four-by-fours, six-by-sixes, plywood, stuff like that. So, basically, if we was to have some type of large vehicle, we're going to have to bring that trailer out, set up saws and stuff like that, and actually construct that on-site to do things like that, even into the, 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 uh, the building collapse, the USAR side of it, we, it would take us a little while to get set up to be able to, to handle something like that. Uh, this is, it's kind of like a Lego set, so to speak, uh, just a very strong and expensive Lego set, uh, so it's very quick, we're going to have it to where it's on one of our apparatus, as soon as that apparatus shows up, they can start pulling what they need off of it and getting it set up. So, setup time is what we're looking at, when you start going into like golden hours and things like that, time is, is very critical for us, so, uh, this kind of just gives us a little bit of an edge.
What kind of warranty does it come with, do you know?
The, the struts themselves are lifetime warranty. Um, now, of course, they're not going to warranty a, a strap or, uh, some type of lifting bag, those have limited warranties, but the, uh, the struts, they're a nationally-used product, they're actually the only product that's used nationally like that. So, you look at the, uh, the building collapses in Miami and, uh, in New York, the trade centers, those, those products were used there, uh, and they're a very trusted product, used all over the world, actually.
I presume heavy amount of training on these things, they look.
Absolutely.
Pretty dangerous, obviously, but.
We have, we have a, a pretty large cadre of folks who are trained on that already.
Okay.
Because we do belong to the, uh, one of the state USAR teams, and that equipment is, is part of that training, so some in-service in our guys will be able to go right to work with it.
Great.
Any question from anyone else from the public? Any other question from anyone on the council? If not, pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Resolution number five.
A resolution to submit a grant application to the National Resources Conservation Service for a project total of one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for Fagan Drive Bank Stabilization. The project total includes a match from the Grant Match Fund of a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, Jay Pittman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jay Pittman with Spanglin Engineering, I've met a few of y'all. Uh, what I have before you is a resolution to submit the grant application to NRCS. Uh, this is related to a, um, bulkhead at Arnold's Creek in Fagan Drive. As a result of IDA, uh, the bulkhead and bank, uh, received some, uh, significant damage and destabilization along the north side, the northwest corner of that box culvert at Fagan Drive. Actually, through the federal government, they have a program through, uh, Natural Resource Conservation Service at a ninety-ten match. So municipalities, entities, uh, were able to go and request and have a federal representative come in, review the site, and we're able to work with that representative, submit a budget of what we think the improvements, uh, will consist of, and they will actually, like I said, meet you at a ninety-ten match. So, the city's responsibility would be ten percent. Uh, the project total cost would be one-point-three-five million dollars. Uh, the, the, as the resolution states, the city's, uh, obligation would be a hundred-and-eighty-thousand. That's for ten percent of the construction match, plus, uh, NRCS will also cover up to seven-and-a-half percent of administrative costs, engineering costs, inspection costs. So, it's a very, very lucrative, uh, program, um, for smaller municipalities, smaller towns, because it allows y'all to recover after disasters, uh, with minimal, I'd say minimal investment, when you're looking at a million dollars, uh, one-point-three million dollars.
Is that the one behind the, uh, the senior living center over there, over there? Okay.
The northwest headwall, uh, post IDA, it shifted significantly, and, um, after inspection, like I said, we were able to get the, the federal representative to come in, and he agreed with our analysis, and that's why we were able to get this on the books.
Has that been redone a few times, or is that just a certain, is that a different side of it?
Uh, we've restabilized or added, uh, riprap there over the years to, um, just kind of offset the, or try to help reduce, uh, damage over the years, but, um, IDA really, um, took its toll on them with the flooding, and so that's why we were able to, like I said, reach out to them and, and get this, um, get this approved.
Is it approved, if we apply, we'll get it, or is there a?
I'd say approved. We, um, we've gotten every inclination, uh, idea that we're going to receive funding, so they're allowing us to proceed with the application process, and that's what, um, they want to make sure that, uh, the sponsor's aware and supports the decision.
Right. Great.
So, Mr. Jay, how you doing?
All right.
So, look, this the only one you found that's having a problem?
Uh, they, you can, um, you can provide different sites, but if it doesn't meet certain requirements for their program, for instance, like a cost-benefit analysis, if it doesn't meet a certain matrix or, or scoring matrix for their program, they will disallow it. Uh, in, in this particular case, this was one of the only ones that met a cost-benefit and, cost-benefit analysis, plus, uh, in, in things they take into that, uh, Mr. Wells is like, the fact that it's a significant thoroughfare between, uh, between roadways, emergency traffic, um, what kind of impacts it would cause if there were additional failures, for instance, if the bulkhead catastrophically fails and blocks the culvert, who upstream is, is flooded. So, to say that it was the only one, no, but it was the only one that met their, uh, their scoring matrix.
Okay, because what I noticed is, and I don't know if you noticed it or not, right there on Mooney Avenue in Phoenix, the, the canal right there, if you look going, if you look south, it's the same creek we're talking about, if you look south, you can see what are the bricks, all them that washed back in the canal are, the Black Harrison on one side, and the canals on the other side, on the, on the east side, those bricks done washed back down in the canal, so it looked like that bank, it done gave in too, and I noticed this before the storm, and it's getting, it's getting worse. I have noticed that.
We, we can make note of that and, and, and monitor it as natural disasters come through, and, and if it continues to be a problem, then we can keep, uh, pressing that issue to this particular program.
Yeah, well, I think it's a problem now, and the reason I say that, I'm not the engineer, the reason I say that because now it's holding less water by caving in on that side of the street, and I should have, I should have told Mr. Wells about it, uh, the parish.
I'm sorry, I mean, that one may be under the drainage district's, um, purview.
Okay, well, I'm saying this here, when they received the grant, and help me out, Mr. Jay, if I'm wrong, when they received a grant, they come from the truck stop, Petro, am I right? When they put the bricks down in the canal?
Uh.
They come from the truck stop, they all went all the way to Adrian House. We know where Adrian stay.
I think you're talking about the, the riprap?
Yeah.
The heavy stone?
The heavy stones.
Yes, sir.
Y'all call them riprap?
Rip, riprap?
I don't know. Okay. Yeah.
It's, it's a heavy limestone, we call it riprap.
Okay, yeah, right there, so that was one of the issues, right there by, uh, on Mooney Avenue in Phoenix, I saw that, because then, over there, what you talking about too, didn't I see some work over there about six months ago, right after IDA, I saw a lot of work going on over there.
That was, that was related to the drainage district.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Now, um, that one-point-three, does the city have to spend that and then get reimbursed from the grant?
Um.
Do they, you, we get it all done, and then they give us?
As the contractor submits pay applica, let's, let's say we receive our funding, we go to bid with it, uh, the city takes a pay application from the contractor, they'll some, submit, um, that reimbursement to NRCS, and it's typically around a, anywhere between a five and, say, nine-week turnaround, is what we've seen in the past. So, you're only, what, what the city would only obligate each month is what the contractor has in his pay application, so it wouldn't be a complete expenditure of one-point-three, and then, uh, the city turn around and have to ask for that back. It's per pay application.
It's the same way that we do all of our other grant programs.
Now, thank you for doing the research and finding the grant. I definitely want to say that.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Tangia Fohowa Voluntary Council on Aging for sixty-thousand dollars from July first, twenty-twenty-two, to June thirty at twenty-twenty-three, Lacey Landrum.
So, as we, as we have discussed year after year, this is an annual contract, um, the main services that the, that we are basically assisting the, um, Council on Aging to provide is our bus service. So, this is the funding sixty thousand that was allocated in the budget. This contract is merely a tool to allow us to disburse funds monthly as the bus service continues.
Any question from anyone in the public? Any question from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Resolution number four.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a services agreement between Tangia Fohow Parish Government Animal Control and the City of Hammond for sixty thousand, excuse me, sixty thousand, fifty-seven dollars from July first, twenty-twenty-two, to June thirty at twenty-twenty-three, Lacey Landrum.
Again, this is an annual contract that we enter into with Tangia Fohow Parish Government. Um, this provides our animal control services throughout the city, um, dogs and cats, um, and the, this is the same amount, sixty thousand, zero fifty-seven, which was, um, budgeted, this would just be the tool that allows us to disburse those funds monthly, um, and this amount that comes from the parish is determined by population, so each city within the parish, uh, contributes based on percentage of population.
Any questions from anyone in the public? Any questions, uh, come in front of council? If not, pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Veteran Affairs for one-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-two dollars from January, from July first, twenty-twenty-two, to June thirty at twenty-twenty-three, Lacey Landrum.
This is the third of our annual contracts for tonight. Um, this is actually a contract that we enter into with the state to provide assistance for the Veterans Affairs Program that is a statewide program. This one has that odd amount of one-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-two, because it is also based on percentage of population, um, so the state sends this down. Um, we also assist with an office, but they have moved that office, um, to a different location, so we used to have that assistance as well, but now it's just financial assistance. What are we going to do with that building, by the way? We are looking to demolish that building, um, and we're actually, speaking of grants, um, we're looking to have FEMA pay ninety percent of that, that is in part of our overall building assessment costs, and those have all been submitted to FEMA.
Any question from anyone from the public? Any que, any other question from the council? If not, pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Report, mayor.[1683.03]